Ms. Danny?
Here.
Ms. Essler?
Here.
Ms. Hilferney?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Ms. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Seesaw?
Here.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
Mr. Tinsley? Mr. Armour?
2.01 is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting December 17, 2018. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. Motion is to approve the invoice listing from December 2018 through January 2019. Do I have this motion?
Seven seconds.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03, Ms. Powell, treasurer's report.
As of November 30, 2018, Pendelco's balance was $49,773,142. During December 2018, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $3,051,598. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $7,517,451. As of December 31, 2018, Pendelco's current balance is $45,307,289. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for December 2018. Do I have this motion?
Seven seconds.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three is student recognition. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stein.
Thank you, Mr. Honore. Welcome everybody who's here tonight. For those of you on the board and those of you in attendance, you all will know that over the years, we have always taken the time to honor and recognize the boy residents in our district who achieved an honor that frankly, when I was younger, I didn't realize was such a big deal, but it is quite a big deal. As a young adult, I learned how difficult it was to earn the Eagle Scout rank. So it's been my pleasure to take some time at our board meetings to recognize the students in our school district who met that accomplishment. It's quite an accomplishment for certain. Tonight, we're recognizing four wonderful young gentlemen from Boy Scout Troop 292 who have earned the Eagle Scout rank. We wanted to give them these certificates of commendation on behalf of the school board to read through some information on each of them. Two could be here tonight and two are unable to attend tonight, attending to their studies, which is fantastic and a testament to the work that they're doing. First Eagle Scout is Ryan Hayes, graduate of Sun Valley High School, majoring in mechanical engineering. His Eagle project included painting historic Christian Weekend Retreat Cottage. His project consisted of meeting with the owner of the site to learn her desired color schemes, planning, organizing, leading a crew of adult members. He's scraping, preparing, and painting the cottage in a color scheme that the owner chose in Aston Township. Ryan was active in Science Olympiad from eighth through 12th grade, team captain. Was active in robotics team, team captain, chief safety officer, seat perch engineer. Also was involved in music. Congratulations to Ryan. Alex Akers. Alex is currently a student pursuing and tends to pursue mechanical engineering. Alex is applying to Winston College. Alex earned astronomy, space exploration, woodworking, disability awareness badges, just to name a few. Serves his troop in a number of leadership positions, including patrol leader, assistant patrol leader, quartermaster. His Eagle Scout project included restoration of a historical schoolhouse in Aston Township, building benches, planting shrubs, planning, organizing, and leading a crew of adult leaders, fellow scouts, friends, and family members in this project. Alex is clearly a leader among his peers. Nick Bailey. Nick is the son of David and Eileen Bailey. Nick's Eagle Scout project was building a storage closet for Mount Hope United Methodist Church Youth Group. Projects included building walls, shelves, hanging doors. Border review for his Eagle Scout rank, where his awarded rank of Eagle Scout was held at the media courthouse on October 3. He earned fingerprinting, fishing, fly fishing, forestry, game design, leatherwork, metalwork, sports, textile, woodcarving, and wilderness survival badges. Was captain of the Sun Valley Wrestling Team in the regional qualifier. He received several awards for wrestling, including the Iron Horse Award. And Shane O'Neil. Shane is the son of Lisa and John O'Neil, graduate of Sun Valley High School. His Eagle Scout project involves replacing the benches on the hill at Mount Hope Church that are used during the Easter morning service. He was responsible for planning, organizing, and leading a crew of adult runners and fellow scouts. His border of review issued the PSA Eagle rank September 26. His interest and involvement extended beyond scouting as a student. He participated in the wrestling team and the cross team. Received several awards, including the Chuck Rosano Extra Man Award, and Rookie of the Year Award, and varsity Ironman Award. Congratulations to those students. And for our scouts that are here, we would like you to come up and receive the certificate. And for the parents who are here for those who couldn't attend, congratulations as well.
Number four is student representative report to the board.
So this Friday, our unified Batty team has a match against Chester Charger at 2:45. It's our first home game. And last week, we'd be at Crest at our first game, and it was pretty cool because it was on the hoes. Yesterday, a lot of the seniors went to their elementary schools to talk to and visit all grades in elementary, and they signed us classrooms to hang out with them and like read and learn and answer questions about middle school and high school. Lastly, the next phase of our construction at Sun Valley will end February 15. The end begins February 15. All the teachers and the models will be moved to their classroom finally, and we won't have to go in those months anymore. It's cold going outside.
Sun Valley's volleyball marathon starts on February 22 at 9:00 p.m., and it goes over night into the 23rd until around 5:00 p.m. It raises a lot of money for Sun Valley, changes where they donate each one, don't want to each year. For example, last year, all the $8,000 raised went to a charity of students who suffered tragic losses. And it's just a fun time for all the students to get to compete against all the other classmates. In the next few days, the freshman dance on February 1st, and the sophomore dance on March 1st. The end of the first semester is coming to a close on Friday. Our midterms actually concluded today, and definitely relieves a lot of stress on the students, as like myself, where I had so much stress and anxiety from midterms. In the winter sports, the boys' basketball team is 5-2 in conference, and they sit at the top of the American Chess Association. Vince DeAngelo, Sun Valley basketball senior, was actually ranked as the second best player in the entire Chess Association while the basketball coach, Steve Muloney, was fourth amongst coaches. Boys' swimming and girls' swimming both post a 1-on-1 record in the conference and are in fourth place while the wrestling team is also in fourth place. And former state champion and Sun Valley junior Hunter Cackett is hoping to get healthy and play in the upcoming matches.
Any more board members have questions for our Sun Valley game board members? Look for a spot. No? That's pretty good. Thank you for the report.
Number five is superintendent's report, Dr. Stein.
Thank you. Good evening again to everybody who's attended tonight or watching our video via the YouTube recording of our January meeting of the Pendelco Board of School Directors. As I do every January, I'd like to take a few moments tonight to acknowledge the work of our school board during this annual Pennsylvania School Board Recognition Month. My administration has the pleasure of working with nine great, very dedicated people who represent the communities of Parkside, Aston, and Brookhaven to make Pendelco as great a district as it can be. There are volunteer efforts which can easily amount to giving up several nights per month and many, many additional hours of study, investigation, in response to calls or emails from community members that can easily be overlooked, but it is not. Our fine teachers from Pendelco Education Association also know how important their work is, and I'd again ask for an opportunity to come before the board and say thank you to them for a job well done. And with that, I'll introduce Ms. Sherry Freeman, PDEA president.
Good evening. Thank you for having me speak this evening. In honor of School Director Recognition Month, the Pendelco Education Association would like to show our appreciation of Pendelco's school directors. As school directors, you work tirelessly to meet the needs of the students in the Pendelco School District. The resources provided, staff employed, and facilities updated show our students daily that you care about them and their development, as they grow from kindergarteners, excited to start school and learn all they can, to seniors, ready to make their way in the world. In honor of that and everything you do, please accept this gift that you can watch grow, prepared by some of those very students.
This is from my first reader, so that's why it looks so beautiful.
The Pendel Penguins.
There's some advice from fourth graders.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Father's words, I appreciate it. Michelle, lovely book, Christmas tree.
Okay, yeah, I'm glad you liked it.
Sherry and to all of our teachers, thank you for that. I'll speak on behalf of the board. It's never expected, it's always appreciated. It's a very kind touch, I'm looking forward to this. My wife would particularly like to see me plant this and have sunflower come up, one of her favorites, so it's worked out very well. It'd be great that the kids did this as well, a little memento for the kids and the classroom, so thank you very much for that. Some facts for folks at home. You might not know about serving on the school board in Pennsylvania. There's 4,500 school directors serve in Pennsylvania's 500 exactly school districts. School director elections are held every two years on a 5-4 rotation. All serve as volunteers. There's no pay, there's no perks, there's no special considerations. Some have committed many years to this service. 22% of the school board members across the state have more than 10 years of experience on their school board. School directors list the need for adequate and additional school funding from the state as the top priority, so that they can better assist students and lift the burden on taxpayers as well. 75% of school board members say that the opportunity to serve the public and give back to their community is the primary reason for serving on the school board. So on behalf of the Pendelco employees, our administrators, my cabinet, myself, thank you for doing what you do, and for being here month after month. We do appreciate it. Pendelco recently had held a very terrific event for male students who had an interest in participating in our choirs. It was aptly called "Men Sing." Both Ms. Haslett and Ms. Boyer did an awesome job bringing together the young men from Northlake and Sun Valley who have a shared interest and felt that it was worth taking some time to show you this very quick video about this unique opportunity. Once again, tremendous work by our PR department putting this together, but it's a unique effort that these teachers don't have to do and made for a very special day for the boys at Northlake and the boys at Sun Valley.
Liz Haslett and I had this idea about how I need more boys in the high school choir. And I noticed that she has a lot of boys in the middle school choir, and we were talking about how to try to keep the male membership throughout the sixth grade all the way to the senior year. And we decided to try to get the middle school and the high school boys together to just hang out, meet each other, get to know each other, and sing a little bit. So that's how the "Men Sing" started, and we really were very passionate about getting them together. We kind of put it together in like a month and decided to do it last year, and this is the second year we're doing it. Attrition is a natural thing that occurs from elementary to middle and middle to high school, but specifically when talking about men singing, sometimes there is like a cultural stigma about getting boys involved and boys feeling discouraged when they like to sing. So we like to put them in an environment where they feel like there's other boys that like to do that. So last year, when we were brainstorming, we came up with this idea. It was just something we're really excited about, putting our guys together. It's really cool, for me at least, to get to see how far I've come by interacting with these kids. You know, I was singing earlier, and I finished the part that we had learned, and I just kept going, and one of the kids was shocked, and he was like, "How did you do that?" And I was like, "Oh, I've learned how to read music." And it's cool just to see how far I've come and to really get a chance to be a leader. You know, it's one thing to do it here with people that are on my level, but to have these kids that look up to me and to teach them something, I think it's so cool.
I think it's a good opportunity to kind of learn more challenging music and get to meet some high schoolers who might be a little more advanced, and they can teach me like some good tactics for singing.
A lot of the kids really know what they're doing, and they're really into singing, and I can tell that they have a passion for this.
I was kind of nervous because I kind of wanted to show like that I can like do as well as the high schoolers, but I'm having a lot of fun today.
I look forward to it every year. It's nice to hear a men's choir. I do love the sound of men's choir. It's a very unique sound, and I think it's nice that the guys get to experience that. I just think it's a generally beneficial thing and powerful message to send that we are a one community in our district, and it, you know, maybe bridges some divides and gets people talking to one another that wouldn't maybe necessarily talk to each other otherwise. So it's just a really exciting thing for us to be able to foster that kind of community building here in our own schools.
We found love right where we are. We found love right where we are.
Thank you. So I hope you enjoyed that. I certainly did, and I think it speaks to the kind of experiences that our kids are getting in the schools that aren't always directly measurable, but certainly are going to be something that kids will remember and keep them involved in really high-quality activities. Last Monday, the Commonwealth rolled out a Safe to Say program. Safe to Say is a tip line that can respond to students or parents who may want to report troubling or potentially harmful situations. Superintendent's across the Commonwealth have been asked to review the program at board meetings in an effort to assist the Attorney General's office in spreading the word about Safe to Say. So far, our middle school students have been trained on Safe to Say, and our Sun Valley students will be trained within the next week as well. I'm going to show you a very abbreviated version of the information that we shared with our students at the assemblies and that we will be sharing with our high school students as well. So we began by reiterating that in our district, and we teach this to our kids at the youngest age, when we see something, we say something. It's not about tattling, not about bothering. When you see something troubling, you say something. We have each other's back by knowing that when someone sees something troubling, violent, or scary, you do the right thing and you take action. We take action by informing people who can help, and we reviewed this information with the students. So it was about a 62-slide presentation. You won't get all that tonight, but this is the kind of quality of material that we shared. Our students, first, we taught them how to look for warning signs. Second, when you see those things, you act immediately. You take it seriously. We talked about circumstances across the nation where people thought kids were joking when they weren't joking. And then finally, of course, you say something. We reiterated that schools are the safest places that they can be. Students are safer in school than they are outside, in public places, in shopping malls, indeed even in their own homes. Students, schools remain the safest place kids can be. But they're not immune, obviously to violence, sadly, suicide, or threats. We talked about the warning signs that they should be aware of, withdraw from others, bullying, excessive anger, extreme mood changes, inability to kind of forgive or forget the wrongs of others, blaming others for their own failures. Went on about other warning signs. Recruiting friends to join in an attack. Warning a friend to stay away from school or a special event. Someone who has a fascination with weapons or might be fascinated about school shootings. Students who have really rigid beliefs or ideologies that seem to be out of the norm. Kids who are giving away possessions. These are all warning signals. Bragging about doing something. We talked about threats, right? Somebody should do that. Somebody should blow this place up. Life isn't worth living. You all would be better off without it. These are the kind of threats. When students hear these things, we empower them to speak up and to say something about We made clear the Safe to Say isn't just about violence prevention and suicide prevention. It's available for people who know about persistent, ongoing bullying, who know about physical or verbal abuse that just won't go away, sexual predators, people who have addiction problems, might have an eating disorder. We then taught them how to act immediately. The principals and the guidance counselors, the teachers, Officer Coyle were there to walk through this. We talked about what happens when people delay acting immediately, right? I thought somebody else would tell someone. I thought they would feel better tomorrow. He just wants attention, it's not real. These are things that people thought when incidents of violence occurred in other places throughout the country and people didn't speak up. So we learned from that. If he was going to do something, why would he announce it publicly? So we trained kids to understand that they should act immediately. Taught them the difference between saying something versus telling oneself, and that's a critically important point, particularly at the younger grade of middle school. And then finally, the process, how do you say something? Well, remind them if it's an emergency, you call 911. But we reiterated, first thing we want them to do is talk to a trusted adult. We told them who those trusted adults are, right? We told them how to speak to those trusted adults. Here's all the options, all the people that they can go to, because oftentimes, kids are afraid to tell their parents because it might implicate themselves. They don't want to tell the principal, they're afraid of getting in trouble. There's plenty of people in their lives that they can report this to, and we encouraged them to do it. Talking about how to have that conversation, went through the steps. I want to talk to you about so-and-so, this is what he or she has done, and I need your help, or we need to get him or her help. And what if, despite all that, you still can't talk to a trusted adult? Or what if they feel, "I better remain anonymous"? That's the option. Before we talked to them about Safe to Say, we reiterated this slide. Adults can be trusted, adults are here to help you. Adults keep information anonymous, we understand. So we really, really stress that. Peace first. But if that's impossible, then what do you do? And this is how the Safe to Say work system, the system works out. You report the anonymous tip. Tip goes up to Harrisburg, to a 24/7 crisis center. They may ask a few questions, and within seconds, they make a determination on how to act on that tip. Students were shown they could go through a mobile app, they could dial it over the phone, or they could submit the tip on a computer. Goes to the crisis center, they try to establish a two-way anonymous dialogue. If it's a critical life safety matter, they'll contact 911. They, that information then is immediately passed on to school officials, and we have a team of six people, including myself, including Mr. Kaminka, Officer Coyle, Ms. Bell. We get that information, we work with our principals to act on it. We showed them how to use the app, showed them how to submit a tip on a website, and how to do it on the phone. This information and graphics like this you may see on billboards, advertisements, newspaper ads, social media, over the coming year, coming out of the office of the Attorney General. So plain and simple, we told them you never make a false tip or joke about it. It could be as serious as picking up the phone and dialing 911. We don't joke about contacting Safe to Say something. Phony or bogus tips, we told them would get them in trouble and could even be criminal. And we said, "Do the right thing, use Safe to Say only when the situation is urgent and real." So will it lead to some tips that don't require a lot of follow-up? Yes, it will. But may it also lead to some preventative measures that could save lives, that could keep people safer, that could help us intervene? We think that it will. So it's a great tool that we have, and our administrators have been trained, teachers are aware of it, students at secondary are trained, and parents of elementary students who would like to learn more can go to our website, and you'll see a link for more information on Safe to Say on our website. And just a few other things tonight. I'm recommending the school board approve the calendar for next school year. Heard from parents who have requested that if it could be approved earlier in the school year, they would appreciate that, and we are doing that this year. So instead of approving the calendar in March, we moved it up to this month. Calendar will call for 184 days of instruction for students, 191 days of work for our teachers. Winter break will be on the lengthier side since the main holiday falls on Wednesday. We put in four potential days for inclement weather. We built that into the calendar so that we will have a minimal of 180 days in school. And again, school will begin for students on a Tuesday after Labor Day, with the last day of school currently scheduled for June 16 for next year's calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stein. Number six on the agenda is announcements for the public. According to Act 48, the Sunshine Law, the board met an executive session tonight to discuss legal and personnel matters. Number seven, comments by members of the board. I'd just like to make it known, on page three of tonight's agenda lists our retirements. Unfortunately, we have to announce the retirement of Sean Lilly and Tracy Marshall. I'm sure that they were looking forward to their retirement, they'll be sorely missed around Pendelco. They're here to give us the support we need to find their replacements and will be with us until the end. But congratulations on your retirement, and my clock probably has about another 35 years, so we'll still count them down if they're happy. Number eight is items for board information. Just for an announcement, 8.01, school board policies were available for first reading, for adoption, and review of the revised policies. Number nine, public comments. Say none. Agenda starts on page two. Number 10 with items for board review carries through page three, four, five, six, and concludes in the middle of page seven. References to Pendelco Budget 2018 through 2019, Act 93 plans, PDESA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, and the PA School Code Section 1108V. These administrative recommendations will approve all personnel items as presented. Do we have this motion?
Seven seconds.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, board utilized a consent agenda to approve agenda items 10.03 through 10.20. I'd just like to make note that in addition to the agenda you have in front of you, 10.19 is a 2019-2020 school calendar approval, and 10.20 is a memorandum of agreement for establishment of Marine Corps National Defense Cadet Corps units, which will be subject to solicitor's review. So if any board member would like anything pulled off the agenda to vote individually, please say so then. If not, I needed a motion to approve 10.02 through 10.20. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Any comments by members of the board? Any comments by members of the board? Members of the public? Out? No public comments? Number 13 is future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 20. It's our study session here at the Service Center, 7:30. Following meeting will be Wednesday, February 27, 2019, will be the business meeting here at the Service Center at 7:30. Motion for German?